Hello, John. John, can you hear me?
How about now? Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
That's not. Mona.
Yes.
Do you recall two, three, four?
Um, let me. Let me introduce um the other members of the committee. So when I say your name, please say here. John Jeffries.
Present.
Robin Hunter.
Here.
And I'm going to introduce staff who we expect to speak. Michael Blanchard.
Here.
Kevin.
McCabe.
McCabe.
Present.
Present. Okay, I think I don't see anything else.
And Bob Tosi is here as well.
Okay, but I don't know if he's gonna speak, but if he does, Bob, Bob, can you introduce yourself?
Yep, Bob Tosi is present.
Okay, so we're ready to rock and roll here, guys. Other um. Other comments? No? Okay, item one, one, Department of Public Works Award Traffic Line Painting Bid to Markings Inc. Award Catch Base and Cleaning and Disposal Services to RJ Gabriel Construction Installation of Traffic Signs on Pine Street. Our illustrious DPW Director Kevin McCabe will do the presentation.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for that great introduction. Um, so for the first item, it's a standard housekeeping item. Uh, you know, the annual line painting townwide. Um, so the lowest responsible bidder would be Markings Inc. Um, this is for a with a the term of, you know, renewable two-year contract, asking the board to authorize Mr. Blanchard to be able to authorize that. Um, followed up by our catch basin cleaning. That's a requirement as far as the MS four permitting. So that's just a regulatory requirement. We have to do another housekeeping item every year. Um, RJ Gabriel was the lowest responsible bidder. Again, that's a one-year contract with two-year options. I'm looking for your authorization for Mr. Blanchard to sign those contracts. And then the third item is for the installation. I've attached a memo for myself and then a memo from the traffic engineer that I had engaged um to study Pine Street. Uh, we had some some public outreach about the line striping there uh and the variable width and changing geometry um and the vehicle counts and what have you. So and that's all condensed in there. So essentially, there's only one section at house number one fifty-three that encroaches less than sixteen feet, uh which is non-compliant to have. It's too narrow to have a double yellow. Uh, so in the back of the memo I had attached, there's a couple of photos there where you you see the the lines breaking up. Um, just as you would see at an intersection where the, you know, the lines aren't contiguous. Um, so with that said, the recommendation was when we read line stripe, which was done on the twenty-seventh of September, uh, you know, to to break up the line where the road uh width is less than sixteen feet. So with that said, just to to cover the town um for many liability, we have to put a regulatory W five dash one. Um, but for the the public engaged here, that is, it's just a a yellow reflectivity sign that says the road narrows. Um, and that would basically be about a hundred, approximately a hundred feet. Um, you know, give or take, obviously, if there's a driveway or sightline issue, it may be farther, maybe less um from the north and south approaches on Pine Street.
So Kevin, how many are we talking about?
Uh, just two.
Okay.
Two signs, right?
Yep, just one on the northbound approach and one on the southbound approach. Just prior, you know, a hundred feet prior to the line painting disappearing essentially.
And Kevin, the the line painting on Pine Street is is complete because on or around, um, and you can see it a little bit in this picture. There's like a really thin yellow line.
Um, so that's that's just.
And then there's this really thin line.
Yeah, so that that those are called pencil lines. Uh, so that's just if the road's unmarked out, basically, they they trace that out prior to.
Okay.
Then they follow that line when they do the full application.
Okay, all right.
So so that'll disappear in, you know, a couple of months.
Over time, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
And Kevin, how how many uh we'll we'll probably get to this in in the next line, in the next item. But um for me, three question, three comments. You have to absolutely promise it's not the same company that painted all the lines crooked on Poisette and Center Street.
Uh, so yeah, as you can see from the memo, the the company we're awarding it to, it is not the lowest responsive bid. Um, it's actually markings is a couple thousand dollars more because K five was that that company.
Was that company. So they were the fifty-three, they were the fifty-three thousand dollar bid.
That that's correct. Um, and they attached us as a reference on their project list. Um, and I'm sure you remember the memo that Bob Tosi, when he was the department head uh back in May, had sent to Kate, uh, at the time, who sent to the board. And that was the same situation we rewarded awarded it to Markings Inc. at that time. Um, and and I I did vet all this through the Attorney General, so we are at our right if if we do want to go with because they are, if we do want to go with the higher bidder, because they are the the lowest responsive and responsible bidder.
Yeah, I'm perfectly fine with that as long as it's absolutely not the company that painted the lines crooked and couldn't match the lines that were in place and happened literally all all around the town. So that's number one. Number two is the palm, the the line painting that doesn't exist right now on the new section of Pleasant Street at uh Pagan down to Main Street. Um, actually, pagan all the way down to Haven is unpainted right now. Are those, is there gonna be a double, double yellow line from pagan all the way down to Haven?
That's correct. That uh that work's actually scheduled for May twenty-fifth. Um, just with the the rainy season we've had, it's it's been very tough to get the subcontractor in to do that. But that work, weather permitted, is scheduled for the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
What?
Which month?
Uh, this month, next week.
Topper, you you said May.
Said May, I was a little.
I'm very sorry for that. No, thank you for correcting me. October twenty-fifth, the work is scheduled for.
Let's go tee it up, buddy.
There's one more thing that um when with the with the no passing on on Pine Street. Can't you make that longer? Can't you make that bigger, like making a bigger section?
Um, yeah, I think that's at the discretion of the board as a road commissioners. Um, but you know, obviously, you know, we we installed it to the uh the recommendation from the, you know, the company that is a professional traffic operations engineer. Um, you know, so that those are the recommendations we use for the installation.
So when do we have to do that? When do we have to make that decision?
Well, the the lines have been painted, so um, you know, every other section of of Pine Street is is wider, is sixteen feet or greater. Um, so where it derived less than sixteen feet is where that, which happens to be only at that one section there where at one fifty-three, where there's kind of a large outcrop of ledge.
There's a big rock.
Yes, a big rock, yeah. Why would you worry? There should be no passing on Pine Street.
Yeah, 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 on the whole street. That's I I'd like it to be the whole street.
Well, it should, well, if you have a double yellow line, there's no passing.
So it's it's.
Theoretically.
Yeah, so anything, it's because that section of roadway, that small section of roadway is less than sixteen feet. So that's not compliant or legal with the manual on the uniform traffic control devices.
So we have special to make it make it longer, make it make it make it bigger, right?
Uh, yes, we'd be, we would not be advised to go longer as as the road would be uh not compliant in that section. Uh, so that's that's what this installation of these two signs are, is to alert motorists that aren't familiar passing through Pine Street that, you know, the road does narrow at that section.
Well, I'm perfectly fine, Bob, if you want uh recommendations, if you want a motion to to accept the recommendations, I'll make the motion to accept the recommendations. And I would also just, as a side.
Right. Why don't you just read the motion?
Hold on, I have to switch screens. Robin, do you have it in front of you?
Yes, I moved to award the traffic line painting bid to Markings Inc. of Pembroke, Massachusetts at the cost of fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents for a one-year contract with renewal options for two consecutive fiscal years. I moved to award the catch basin cleaning and disposal services to RJ Gabriel Construction of Bridgewater, Massachusetts at a cost of thirty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars even for a one-year contract with renewal options for two consecutive fiscal years. I moved to approve the installation of traffic signage on Pine Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi, Bob Springer.
Hi, John Jeffries.
I, Robin Hunter.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you to the board.
Next item is Personnel Board. Um, Juris, Halksmidus and Sue Jeremiah do the presentation.
Evening, everyone.
Good evening.
As you can see, um, I'm zooming in from the hills of Dover. Where where my cellphone coverage is super thin. So this is a bit better. Uh, we're glad to be here. It's the annual rate of uh recommendation for the personal board's recommendation on the general increase. And what I'd like to do is just take a couple of minutes to uh give you a little uh sort of stage setting for where we are with the overall process and then narrow it down to the recommendation, which Sue will walk us through in a few minutes using a PowerPoint, which we thank um Michael for queuing up for us. So you may recall, as you are the Board of Selectmen, that uh at the end of twenty twenty-two, uh, you approved a new classification structure for the town, which was a subject of a study and considerable work. And you also approved the schedule for fiscal twenty twenty-four consisting of two major components. This would be a compensation schedule. The first part of that compensation schedule is called the Legacy Wage and Salary Plan. This was for employees whose compensation potential was better on the prior schedule. And the rest was covered by fiscal twenty twenty-four Non-Union Wage and Salary Plan for all others. And for most employees, these schedules have now been in place for about four months. Going forward, the Personnel Board will seek to gauge whether the town is maintaining parity with the market under the new system and its compensation plans. This may include sampling market data for certain jobs as necessary and definitely will include in the not-so-distant future another compensation survey as the last one was completed back in twenty twenty-one. As you also may recall, that the the board has a particular responsibility under the bylaws and stated succinctly, it's to ensure a uniform, fair and efficient compensation system. This was put in place in our bylaws in nineteen ninety, and the Personnel Board takes this responsibility uh very seriously and has sought to faithfully discharge discharge its responsibilities since that time. Uh, and with that, I will now turn uh sort of the podium over to Sue and with the PowerPoint share, I'll queue it up.
Um, thank you for that. Hi, everybody. It's a pleasure to be on Zoom with you all today. Uh, and I thank Yurus for his introduction. So I will go through this as quickly as possible, but not to rush the salient points. And if you have questions, please stop me and Yurus will answer them. And I will do. So uh, this is.
You're on a hook, Penny, you're on a hook.
Not the first time.
So this is an overview from the Town of Dover Compensation System and Personnel Board Recommendations for FY twenty twenty-five. Uh, before we move on to our recommendation, I would like to review the goals of the compensation plan. As you can see, these are to support a qualified and engaged workforce for the town, to create a system that is comparable to other towns in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and to adhere to a consistent and data-driven approach to determine the market position of Dover's jobs. The population we are focused on today are non-union management, professional and administrative employees. This is a total of sixty-six employees, as you can see from the chart below. This chart also gives you an idea of what the compensation plans look like for other town employee groups. And you can see there are many, there are step increase and general increase uh for quite a few, the police, highway, so forth. Uh, we can move to the next one if anyone, okay. It is also important to look at the components of the compensation plan, and there are two. The first is the step structure, step increase. Nearly one hundred percent of Massachusetts towns have this structure and over seventy-five percent use it for all employees, as you can see. This structure allows the town to hire at market, reward tenure and cap salaries at market maximums. Specifically, the cost of one percent for the general increase for FY twenty twenty-five in this system is forty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. And that will be particularly relevant as we move along when our recommendation comes into play. The second component is the market structure and, of course, the general increase that we are talking about today. This increase is a market recommendation by the Personnel Board in conjunction with the Warrant Committee and the Board of Selectmen as part of the budget voted on at town meeting. For the past fifteen years, we've used Department of Labor data, New England Employee Cost Index, the National ECI, National Statistics and local and government raises and CPI, as well as Social Security and other town data to make this recommendation. And of course, surveys are done, as yours mentioned, every three to five years to validate Dover Dover's market position. We've implemented the recent Compensation Classification Plan based on FY twenty twenty-one data, again, as mentioned earlier. Next, we'll take a look at the historical view of classification and wage analysis studies. As you can see, from two thousand and one to twenty twenty-three, we have initiated a number of classification surveys and pricing studies. These are all to help us know where our employees are relative to pay in the marketplace. Uh, if you don't have any questions about that, I mean, we could go into detail, but I know um you know, we've looked at a lot of this data as as it's been published over the years. Yurus.
So I, I think it's important also for 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 you to mention that, you know, when you do go out and do these market studies, you adjust the jobs to fit the type of town that Dover is as best as you can.
Yes, that's a very relevant point. As we know, Dover is such a unique community and it's really impossible. And I would say the same is true of many towns around us. I don't know if that's a New England situation or whether it's everywhere, but every town has a unique and different structure. But we are able to take, say, the cemetery or um Parks and Rec or whatever it is, and try to find towns that have very similar structures within our entire town structure. Thank you, Robin. That's a very relevant point.
Did Sue, did doing the country, um, the classification study help eliminate some of those anomalies? I mean, in essence, we have three hundred and seventy small towns. We have three hundred and seventy towns who have governments, right? I mean, to me, I'd make a joke and say, it looks like McDonald franchises. They all do this, they all do the same thing. They're all trying to do the same thing. They all have limited um resources, right? You're all, we're all back to the to the tax base. And so I, there was a lot of work done on on last year and 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 just one, recognize that. Uh, but two, wondering if it helped, what the impact was.
Of the study itself?
Yeah, I mean, did we, did we come closer together with what other people are doing? I mean, like I said, the jobs are the same. You know, you have a treasurer, you have a.
Well, interestingly, the the jobs aren't always the same. And that's kind of, I think, what Robin was mentioning. I do agree with you that the overall structure of the work that needs to get done is the same. But for instance, um, we've had person, we've had employees, without mentioning names, who work for the Highway Department and they work in the cemetery. And sometimes they'll help somewhere else, like they, it's sort of on an on an as-needed basis. And I might not be articulate.
Tried to fix that, we weren't allowed.
Well, so I don't know who needs to fix it, but uh.
You go to the commission.
Well, well, oh. I'm gonna say that's not my job, but it might be, who knows?
Well, it's not our job to, it's not a job to restructure the town. That's a whole different question.
Yeah. So um, your point is very valid, and uh, there have been many, many conversations about whether we should have jobs that we have or whether we, maybe we'd be more efficient if we had a different structure. And I think over time, to your point, Bob, that is changing and we're evolving. And, you know, with new administration and you know, just with people coming in who have seen how other towns work, that has been helpful as well in helping us evolve. And I think with our last um compensation plan study, all its components, and now that we have a more simplified structure, we are always looking, when our job descriptions are being evaluated, to figure out ways to potentially add responsibilities or take responsibilities away from certain positions so that they align better with um other towns where there's efficiencies.
Okay.
I don't know, does that help?
Oh, yeah, 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 no, I just wanted to make sure that we did all that work and we're getting benefits, you know?
I think it's for me, Sue, it fits perfectly what you just said in 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 response to Robin and Bob is if for me, I think you stated right in the second line, the second bullet point on this particular slide that you're on, the follow-up classification study to validate the structure, which I think is the key that we're trying, you're trying, the 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 goal of this for us is to validate the ongoing nature of exactly what we're discussing right now. Trying to make sure that we have a similar recognition as the other towns trying to get to the fifty percent target that we're trying to get to. Yours.
Exactly.
Yeah. Would you agree with that?
Um, yes, but um without going into the weeds, maybe it'll help us if we switch to the next uh uh, the next slide for me to answer that question. Here you can see where the Town of Dover found itself um as a result of pricing and or compensation studies over the years. Sometimes we were we were uh fairly close to the fiftieth percentile. Sometimes we were way off, and the last time we ran the numbers based on the twenty twenty-one study were, we were seven percent below. Uh, going forward, since we now have a new system and new structure uh and an updated salary schedule, uh, the Personnel Board will very closely uh try to gauge how this is going to work out for the town going forward. Uh, we already know from some of the appeals processes that that were handled that there are parts of the structure which may need refinement in the future. But we've only been in in the system for about four months. Uh, so time will tell as to what we discover uh as we monitor the situation. Uh, and we will probably know considerably better when we actually do the next either compensation or pricing study in a year or two. I hope that was.
So that was very helpful, Yurus. And I think, you know, the benefit of the system, which was complicated the first time I saw it, is it really standardizes and professionalizes this um increase process so that, you know, before we were looking for different kinds of metrics and we were never quite sure if if we were, how we were tracking to that target of the fiftieth percentile. And I I I believe that the system that we have in place, I agree with you, it will need tweaks, but it's gonna get us closer to our goal.
And and from the perspective of the Personnel Board, uh, when it comes to recommendation for general increases, uh, but we'd like uh the Board of Selectmen and others like the Warrant Committee to bear in mind is that we're looking at the long-term benefit to the town and its employee population. It doesn't, is not very helpful to give bare bones uh increases if it's going to uh more quickly put us back into a situation where we have a larger number of under-market positions. Does that, that does not help uh retainment uh or morale uh within the town.
Yurus, I I could tell you that the Board of Selectmen agrees with you in that uh, we have demonstrated exactly what you just said with our last several contracts for the police, for DPW, for teachers. There's, we have, we have, we have done everything that we possibly can do to do exactly that, to be mindful of the constraints that we have from a budgetary standpoint, but also to be mindful that we have to do everything that we can to achieve what you just described.
Okay, it's a sue or jurist?
Uh, Sue, would you do the next one?
Yes, next slide. Thank you, Yurus. So what we're looking at now are are FY twenty-five projected COLA estimates. So line A uh is the base salary budget with steps non-union only, of course. And you can see fiscal year twenty-four estimated non-union salaries at four million, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, one dollar. The FY twenty-five projected non-union salaries are four million, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-one. So what you have below that, which you can see, and this goes back to that one percent we had um spoken about in the estimate there, is B, C, D, and E would be the base plus one percent. The base plus two plus two percent, the base plus two point five percent and the base plus three percent. And as you can see, what we really wanted to look at was how much money are we talking about for each of these percentages? So before we even got to what we wanted to recommend or when we were thinking about what the percentage recommendation would be, we were also mindful to what you were saying, John, about, okay, how much money are we talking about? So that it was just part of the equation and part of the consideration for us as well. Does this all make sense?
Yes, absolutely.
So importantly, again, uh, referencing what we had mentioned earlier, we've taken a look at comparable communities. And, you know, as soon as we were looking at this slide, the first thing we all thought was, what's comparable? Nothing. Dover is itself, there is no other Dover. The good and the bad when it comes to this. So um, you know, the best thing we can do is take towns that are around us that may have some similar components to them, again, referencing our earlier conversation. And, you know, in my mind, too, of course, you want towns around you that might be looking at our open positions or our own employees who might be looking at relatively nearby towns that they could commute to easily, that might have higher salaries or better benefits or other soft things that, you know, we haven't even considered yet, soft benefits. So as you can see, for these eight comparable towns, comparable in quotations, the non-bargaining market adjustment Comparable in quotations, the non-bargaining market adjustment. Uh, for Canton three point O, Millis two point five, Milton three point O, Natick two point O, Norfolk one point five. Sharon two point five, Stowe three point O, Westwood two point five. So the non-bargaining range for this group of comparable towns is one point five to three point O. Which, I have to say, when I saw it, I actually was pretty impressed that they were as high as they were. And that these towns are really, to your point again, John, are really considering what they have to do to make sure that their employees are treated fairly. And, and um, also to support retention. So of course, in this other column, you can see the FY twenty five um, bargaining market adjustment. Which, as you can see, Dover's in there twice, and you've been involved in, in um, some of this as well. Is that all good?
Yeah, that's really, really good, that, we, we can, i- if, if we. We, it's really good, Sue, it's really, that's what we look at, with, there are some, there are some towns that we've identified that are a little bit more. Like Dover, we focus on for the police and for the, for the DPW. When we're in, in these negotiations, the schools are a little bit wider afield. We can narrow the focus with, with the police and, and DPW because they have a very. Defined number of participants, so we wouldn't compare to Needham, we wouldn't compare to Westwood. They have a, a much larger force and a much larger DPW, so we, we can use those constraints, but this is, this is spot on. It's, it's in, it's definitely in keeping with how we, with the methodology that we've used for the other groups.
Great, and we can, you know, we can always, particularly in future years, or even if we need to, at this point, we can add other towns as we see fit, if that's helpful as well.
I, 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 I mean, Sue, if we remember next year, we could also give you a list, like, I could give you a list of the, the, the um. The towns of Dover and Sherburne agreed with the um, educators union on, on what, what the comp towns are. So there are a list of ten, many of them that you have on this list are part of that, but it would just be another data point for you.
Well, it'd be great, because then we'd be fully aligned, and I think that, that'd be awesome, okay?
So I'll send that along.
I, I think the, uh, I'll point a footnote here to these numbers. Uh, is that Robin has uh, done her best to get responses from nearby communities. And this is a sample of those who responded.
Right.
This is actually longer to um, that we typically.
That's true.
Uh, and so this is what's come in to date, and not everyone does their um, increase determinations at the same time. It takes time for them to actually trickle in.
And he's referencing the new Robin.
Yeah, I know the Robin with the eye, I was like, I didn't do that for him.
Uh, yes, you're right, thank you for, for clearing that out.
I, I told her when they're compliments, I'm willing to, to take credit for it, but.
And, and.
Don't, don't worry, yours, we, we won't let that slip, we'll, we.
I, I think, I think Robin's on the call as well, I saw her, yeah.
Oh, she's, yes, and she can take some credit.
And the other footnote here is that uh, whenever we look at uh, these deltas or increases that nearby communities make. Uh, we don't necessarily know the considerations that they take into, into mind. Um, and we don't actually know how they see their own uh, compensation levels to market. But this is, this is just a part of the picture. And so we can't tell you whether or not, when the Sharon said two point five, whether they thought they were at, at market or not.
Right.
One of the outliers that towns are dealing with in the collective bargaining side of the equation, yours, is. The ability to get applicants for the jobs, there's been. A dramatic decrease in the level of applicants for some of the jobs specifically. On the, on the, in police forces at our size, it's a very, very competitive market in, in, for policing. And then for, for DPW, Bobby Tosi was just on the call, he, he could speak to that, it's been. Very hard to get skilled labor in DPW, so.
Um, and, and just a final third footnote to these numbers. Uh, and that is that uh, there are some in-town numbers uh, that do not have um. Corresponding entities in other communities. And these are largely within uh, the Dover Sherburne School District, so for example. You have three entities that are, I believe, bargaining entities. Uh, such as the food service folks and the custodial folks. And administrative assistant folks, uh, and I believe they are also a bargaining entity of some kind. And I, if I'm not mistaken, uh, they're looking at receiving a, a three percent of delta or increase. Uh, for fiscal twenty five. But we don't have the final information on that, I just mentioned that, because that's an in-house situation where we are. Already looking at, or they are looking at positions which are also mirrored in the town system. Custodial, custodial, admin, admin, and so forth, and so forth. So, do we wanna increase disparities? We do not, I don't think. So I just thought I'd put that in as the final footnote to these numbers.
Okay, so. One more slide. Uh, so finally, uh, background information for fiscal year twenty twenty five and the recommendation. Uh, the employment cost index wages and salaries for state, local, and government workers for the twelve months, July twenty second to June twenty third. Experienced an increase of four point seven percent in all categories. Four point five percent management, five percent office and administration, and four point seven percent public administration. Positions. In social security, which was recently announced, count, for calendar year twenty four, it was a three point two percent increase. Uh, the CPI U change, Boston, July twenty second to July twenty twenty three, uh, was two point eight one percent. And the US government employment increase, as you can see, was four point seven percent. In consideration of all this data and the goals of our compensation plan, the Personnel Board recommends a three percent increase. The cost of the three percent increase, as we've seen earlier, is one hundred and twenty eight thousand four hundred and seventy four dollars for the employees in this plan. Any questions?
No, thank, thank you, it was, I, I thought it was very comprehensive, I, I appreciate it.
Well, we're trying to, as information comes in, capture it in a way that's relevant, that isn't too data-heavy, but yet is. You know, and yours and I are, continue to work on this, as we're both new to being the architects. Of this plan and this conversation, so I think even doing it ourselves this year, we're with Robin's help. We're, you know, learning a lot about what's helpful to you and what's reasonable and. Um, you know, we can look at it all, but sometimes it's hard to figure out what's relevant, what's most relevant.
Right, well, from, from my perspective, I, I'm not sure about John and Bob, but you, this was a, a very good. Presentation and it, and it hit the right points.
Thank you. I'm glad, it's a lot of stress around some of it.
And if I may add just one final tiny uh, footnote. Um, does, can anyone guess what that? One hundred twenty eight thousand figure represents as a percent of the town budget?
Budget's somewhere around fifty million, so it's a very small number.
Yeah, that's, that's right, it's probably less than three tenths of one percent of that budget. So the other part challenged, I mean, this is, I mean, this is always a, a, a very difficult thing to do because of all the. All of the considerations that you've uh, you've mentioned. I'll tell you, the one thing that's really bothering me and many other people is the difficulty that we're having um, recruiting. And what that will ultimately do is force you to go outside.
Yeah.
And you see that happening in all sorts of businesses that were once independent, and now they're all part of chains. Um, and, and simply because you can't continue to drive up costs um. Or if you can't hire people, you can't hire people, you gotta, you have work to get done, so that'd be something, as we go forward in time, I'd like you to keep an eye on if you can.
I mean, outsourcing, you feel like there's a lot of outsourcing going on?
The difficulty with, the difficulty with recruiting, so you, we can't find people who should.
Oh, okay, yeah.
It should jack up prices, and um, it'd just be, I mean, if you're gonna con- continue to. Have conversations with the other communities, it'd be nice to get some uh, feedback on that point.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, Sue, the, my, final word for me is thank you to, to both of you, uh, the, this is just a, another. Confirmation that to everyone, to our, to our town employees, that we are trying desperately to do. To work into the confines that we have to keep our employees. Uh, in the target market that we are trying to manage to, uh, stay within. The guidelines of Proposition Two and a Half in our tax levy and, and do it responsibly, so we're, we're delivering. A great quality employee to the town at a very. Uh, fair market rate that everybody can be successful at, so thank you again, both, this is very well done.
Thank you. Okay.
Are you, are you all set with us? Does that mean we?
Well, I, I, I don't know.
Tell us when we have to go.
So you stay.
We're gonna try, we're gonna try to vote on your recommendation.
Right.
So um, suggested motion, I move to approve a fiscal year twenty five market increase. Of three percent for the town's non-union staff.
Second.
One in favor, I, Bob Springett?
Aye, John Jeffries.
Aye, Robin Hunter.
Now you can go.
Now you can leave, go left.
Thank you, thank you, you appreciate this, it's, we appreciate it for, for the employees at Town Hall.
Thank you.
If you'll permit me, I'd like to hear uh, the update on the housing plan that's on the agenda.
I think that's our next item.
Thank you.
You, you are welcome to stay.
Village meeting, you don't have to leave, you can stay, I just sent you a bill for, for some more time, that's all, not a big deal.
So I would like to stay, but I can't stay, so I'm gonna say goodbye, but thank you so much, I really, again. I really appreciate your time and voting that three percent, I'll see you all soon.
Okay.
Okay, bye now.
Okay, so Housing Production Plan Certification of Compliance Report, um, our town planner. Jasmine Farinacci, is that, get, get that right? Close. This will do the uh, board member Valerie Lynn will do the presentation. So Valerie, you got two minutes.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Valerie Lynn, fourteen Haven Terrace, and an associate member of the planning board. Uh, thank you for having this on your agenda tonight, um, I was, have been working with Jasmine and Mike. We um, well, to take a step back, I, I'm sure you all know what the Housing Production Plan is, but just as a quick refresher. Uh, the Housing Production Plan is a document that, that Dover provided to the state back in twenty twenty one. Um, and it out, it's a kind of a SWOT analysis of the housing conditions in Dover and the housing needs. And toward the end of that is a list of goals and solutions that Dover has to address the identified housing needs. Um, and so we have been working on that since that was provided to the state and it was approved by the state. And one of the reasons why a community would have a housing production plan is because as you're moving forward on your goals. There are certain goals that when you achieve those, which is um, point five to one percent of subs, approved subsidized housing. Um, of your current housing stock, uh, you then are qualified for um, up to a two-year. Pause in uh, forty B developments in your community. And so, as we have been looking at this and working toward this, this was one of our goals that was in our housing production plan. And in twenty twenty two, uh, we had identified an opportunity to. Uh, uh, increase the housing in Dover by more than one percent. And that was identified as a goal, it was um, approved at the ZBA level, and that housing project uh, got underway in twenty twenty two. So another step in this process then is to have the housing um. Formally accepted by the state, which it was in, I believe, March of twenty twenty two. And then the last step in the process to get your pause. Um, is to request certification of your compliance with your housing production goals. And that is where we got a little bit tripped up. And we didn't realize this until this past summer, um, when a lot of forty B activities started happening in Dover. And when we went, we, we thought we had this because it was part of our plan, so when we went to validate that we. Did indeed qualify for this pause, we discovered that the last step had not been completed, and therefore. Uh, we at this time didn't have the ability to have a pause in the forty B development. So as, as communications happened with the state. Um, the state laid out the guidelines that they've put together for this program. And because so many of us in Dover on the various boards and staff members are either. New to Dover or new to the forty B process, this was kind of a new process that many of us didn't. Uh, have experience with, so um. What we were told is that Dover missed the window of submission for this request for the two-year pause. Um, so then we started doing a little bit of digging because it seemed strange that there, uh, to, to me anyways, that there would be. A certain window if you have up to two years where you could have this opportunity, so. Um, that's when I reached out to Mike and we started looking at this. And if I can share my screen, I'll just kind of show you where we're at and what I'm requesting tonight. Um, let me see if I'm able to. I guess I can't, well, so um. What I can do is tell you that um. We have, Jasmine and I have drafted a letter to send to the state. Uh, requesting that, um, that they recognize that we have achieved our um, housing production plan goals. And that we uh, we get the certification for the two-year pause. Along these lines, we're not asking for two years, the clock to start today. We're asking that the clock started back in March of twenty twenty two, when we qualified for it. And then it would go until March of twenty twenty four. So we're not asking for a waiver from any of the state statutes, we're just asking that we. Receive the benefits that the statute grants to communities who meet their housing production goals. Um. And so. And so, along these lines, what we found out is that the statute, what it appears to me. And Mike, I would love if you're interested or able to, to comment on this, it appears to me that the state statute. Says. Um, that requests for certification may be submitted at any time. But what the guidelines state from the Housing Department. Is that um, requests for certification will be accepted by the Department of Housing and Community Development. At any time during the calendar year in which the units are produced. And up to January tenth of the following year. So we feel like there's a bit of a conflict. Because the language in the guidelines, in my opinion, takes away the benefits that the statute provides us with, which is a two-year pause. So that's why we would like to move forward with sending the, the request to the state. To recognize um, the certification of our municipal compliance with our housing um. Uh, production plan and um. And. At least give it a try and see what happens from there. So uh, and Mr. Di Martino, who's at the state level. Said that they, that the Department of Housing and Community Development cannot make any decisions about a town's certification status until a formal request is made. Which is why um, we would like to move forward with making the, the formal request. And in a worst-case scenario, we are where we are today, which they deny it, and we don't have. The two, the um, the remaining uh, four months of the, the two-year pause. And in a best-case scenario, they will work with us and allow us to move forward with having a two-year pause. Which would give the zoning board of appeals the ability to um. To deny a forty B project um, up until March of twenty twenty four. Then that pause goes away and. Then that pause goes away and we will work forward with whatever projects would come in front of us.
John, any questions?
Yeah, I, thank you, Bob. I, Valerie, I understand how this could happen to you because this is not something that Valerie Lynn does every day. I cannot understand how it happened to Nina and our town council. Nina, how did this happen?
Hi, John. Yeah, so the, the Housing Production Plan and Compliance with the Housing Production Plan is not something that was done by town council's office. We could certainly have assisted with it if someone asked, but this was not something our office was ever asked to do.
John, I can just, I, I researched this a little bit. One of the first things that came across my desk when I started was, you know, some people thought we were in compliance. So there's, there's two things that seem to have happened. One is, um, as you know, there was a lot of transition, both in this office and the planning department. Um, so potentially, you know, a ball was dropped and, and no one sought this certification. The other piece is there was some opinion that people thought perhaps this hot, happened automatically. If you hit your targets, you were automatically in that compliance. The truth is, it had to be a proactive request and it had to be a request that was uh, brought to you as, as the selectmen and made by you as executive body to request this certification. So, you know, whether that be a board member or staff would bring that to you like we're doing now and asking you to proactively request this. And, and that's what did not happen.
Just a simple error.
Right, and, and I think, you know, it, it doesn't help anybody to go back and place blame. Rather, we need to look forward and make sure that this never happens again. And we are, are working on that as, as, as a team to put a crop, a process in place to ensure that we understand all the steps that need to be taken in connection with these multifamily developments. It's not something that Dover does on a regular basis, so it's very important for us going forward to have a checklist.
Well, I'll take, I'll take a, um, a page out of my British experience where, um, their view of when you do something like this is you always want to have on belts and braces. So to keep your pants up, you want to make sure you have a safety valve in case either your braces break or your belt slips. And so it, it really makes something, I, I, and I think everybody needs to do this. Um, the world is getting more complicated. The legislation is getting more complicated. What we, as a small town, like I, my analogy to McDonald's, were being asked to do a heck of a lot more than fried burgers and, uh, flip burgers and, you know, do fries. Complex instruments should be reviewed by council. And so I would strongly suggest that as we go through this process, that was a process failure, in my view. Um, and, um, that should simply be corrected. Belts and braces, when you're dealing with complex things, that volunteers, I thank God for volunteers, but I don't know where the knowledge comes from. Um, and this stuff is changing all the time. If there was one recommendation I would make, that would be it.
Uh, if I could.
Excuse me? Who, who's where?
Sorry, this is Nina.
Oh, Nina, hello. How are you? I didn't know you were there. You were invisible.
I'm sorry, I am invisible. I'm in the car. Um, so it's best for all if I don't have the camera on. To, to John's point, um, you know, I do think at this point we should be involved in reviewing the request being made to the state. Mike and I have a call scheduled for tomorrow morning to review a number of issues with respect to um, affordable housing and uh, forty B in town. Um, I do have some concerns about making the request quite clear. Um, both for the town and for the state as to what the impact of achieving safe harbor would be on pending applications. That's not at all clear. Um, so I, I want to make sure that everyone's expectations on that. Um, we have the, the proper expectations when we go and make this request in the state.
A, a process question? Uh, is there an appeals process available? That could be followed?
It's my understanding that you can request a waiver. Um, but we might need some more guidance around how that process works.
Yeah, I don't think there's a formal, it's, it's all discretionary at the um, agency level. So this is not like a, an appeal of a court determination. So it's, it's all about the arguments we make to the agency.
Okay, so I, I want to, for the next steps, are we going to ask Nina to look at the documents and then execute? Or are we just going to execute the documents? The request rather? Or do we need, what Nina's suggesting that there's still some murky areas that should be clarified. It's not clear to me what you guys are asking us to do.
So, so I think what we're asking is, is that if, if we could work with town council to draft a formal request to the state and, um, with council's, you know, opinion, send, send that off, uh, that request, if the board would be in favor of sending that request.
Yeah, I, so just a comment from me, Mike, is I agree with Bob. This is a big miss. And I, I, I understand Robin's perspective of going back and assessing blame, but this is a big miss.
But John, no bunnies, no, but it is what it is. You know, it, 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 it happened. It was a mistake. We know that. And going forward, we need to make absolutely certain that this never happens again. And so we are putting procedures in place to ensure that.
I think that's, asking, what are the procedures that we are being asked to put in place?
Not a review by council. The, um, when was this? You were talking about this being during a period of significant turmoil in town.
Sure. So, so the, the request, according to what we've heard from the state, uh, state employee, the request, quest needed to be made by the end of calendar year twenty twenty-two. Because that is.
At the end of twenty twenty-two.
Right. That was, that was the year that the Red Rapids development was approved. And so therefore we had until, I think, technically January tenth or whatever that date was, but the end of calendar year twenty twenty-two.
Okay. So there were extenuating circumstances here. Um, so I'm, I'm sort of in the, let's move ahead and figure out what we need to do to get this back on the rails. And I agree absolutely with John, and I agree absolutely with Robin. But once we get, getting it back on the rules and clues, making sure there are the right checks and balances. Um, and we have a checkbox that everybody who needs to sign off on this signs off on this. Hopefully it's automated, so we don't actually need pencils and, um, and we go forward. No reason to go back. It just seems like it could. And again, what was going on in the end of last year?
And I think to Robin's point, uh, and I know we'll talk later about the housing task force. You know, there, there are multiple players involved in this. So the Housing Production Plan, you know, was a product of, of the, the planning board. The, the ZBA oversees the issuance of the forty B permits. And then the selectmen are the ones that would vote to request compliance. So, you know, there, you have to, there's three people involved and not any one person is in charge. So I think that really.
That's Dover.
Well, well, no, and that's, that's every, every community. Those, those, those things exist even in any community. And so I think that's really the, the importance of the task force and developing that checklist is it brings all those players to the table. So everyone's talking on the same page and is able to be proactive.
Okay, so any other questions to follow up? Before I move to the motion?
Oh, I think you have to change the motion.
I do have to change the motion. I'm going to ask Michael to do that. The, um, John, you okay?
Yeah, there, there's, there's a lot here to unpack and there's a lot to discuss procedurally going forward. So I, I, I think that, um, this is something that we're, we, as a, as a board, we, we have to look at very carefully and I, I, I just, I can't tell you how really disappointed I am in how this happened. And I, I, I can imagine going forward, we're gonna have to make changes to make sure this doesn't happen again.
We've already made one when we put this task force together.
Yeah. That's one of, of, and there should be others.
Listen, John, you know every rock we turned over, right?
Okay, so why don't we move?
Uh, Mike, why don't you give your motion?
Uh, yeah, so I'm gonna fumble through this, but I, I think you could have moved, uh, to, um, have the town administrator work with town council to provide a formal request to the executive office of housing in livable communities for the housing plan, uh, certification of compliance.
Okay, that's my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, I, Bob Springer?
Aye, John Jeffries.
Aye, Robin Hunter.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Thank you, everyone.
This next one is real, thank you, Val. That was, that was a really wonderful presentation. It was actually clear. I could follow it. I knew what was going on and I knew where it was gonna end. So good storytelling. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Conflict waiver for the town of Dover and Polty Homes of New England LLC are item number one dot, dot four. Uh, I guess it's gonna be Mike and Nina. Um, who wants to lead?
Nina, do you want to jump in?
Sure, I'm happy to. Um, so this is really a, a routine matter that we've actually been lucky enough in Dover that it doesn't come up very often, but, um, it's just a client conflict waiver. What it is, is, um, a, a certain practice group in my firm, uh, a certain partner has been asked to work with Polty Homes to review their filings for environmental compliance on a project in Canton. Uh, their work has been limited to that project in Canton. It has nothing to do with any other project for Polty Homes. Uh, and then certainly has something to do with any proposed, uh, project in or near Dover. Um, what they are requesting, um, is a limited um, conflict waiver, which just says those specific lawyers who do not work on Dover matters can work on that Polty matter in Canton. Um, it acknowledges as, and, and Polty has signed on to this that, um, none of those lawyers will work on any of, uh, the Dover matters that involve or may involve Polty Homes. Um, and that in the event that there ever becomes any litigation between the town of Dover and Polty Homes, that, uh, the firm would drop Polty Homes as a client as we cannot litigate against any, um, any current client. So it just simply puts in place some guardrails. Um, and make sure both clients are aware of the lawyers working for um, both of these different clients on different matters. Again, not on the same matter. Um, this is something that routinely is approved, um, by the, the client and the client contact. Um, at this point, Mike felt it was more appropriate to discuss with Bob and, and Bob wanted to review it with the board, given obviously the, um, importance and focus on housing issues in town right now. So um, I'm happy to answer any questions about the kind of structure we're proposing. Um, but this is, as I think Mike can tell you from his experience, something that kind of routinely um, happens and is brought up to towns by council.
Nina, about how routinely is this? I mean, is it, yeah, ten percent of the stuff, twenty percent of the stuff, five percent?
Do you mean, I, I, how often do I seek conflict waivers from, from my other towns?
Yeah, conflict, yeah.
Um,
Was it rare?
Once every, no, once every three or four months.
Okay.
Um, many of our towns have much more involvement either with each other or with other state agency clients like the MBTA or Mastot, just because of where they're located. So we have to get conflict waivers for those issues quite routinely. It is certainly rare for, for Dover.
Okay, John or, and, and?
What, what, what are our options if we, if we think this is a bad idea and we're uncomfortable with it?
You tell me no, and I tell my partner no, and he can't take on that work.
Okay, uh, what, what if we decide we should get a different, uh, outs, can we get a different outside town council for this particular phase?
For, for what particular phase?
Housing, specifically.
Um, that certainly wouldn't be my preference. My preference would be just to tell Polting and my partner, no.
Can we do it?
Sure.
Okay, I'm, I am very much against doing this. I'm very uncomfortable with it. And I would be much more comfortable if the town had separate council, outside council for this, for this matter.
Thank you, John. Robin?
It sounds like it's routine. It sounds like the other partner is purely doing an environmental assessment in the town of Canton.
Yeah, I.
To do with Nina.
Yeah, we, we, we ran into this a fair amount, so. Um, and, and, um, this part is just do with business with, with, uh, with different law firms. So, um, I am gonna move on this and we'll see where the vote comes out. Unless there are other follow-up questions or anything. No? I move to approve the conflict waiver for the town of Dover and Polty Homes of New England and to authorize the town administrator to sign said waiver. I need a second.
Second.
All in favor, I, Bob Springer?
No, John Jeffries.
Aye, Robin Hunter.
Okay. Done. John, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. And John, I'll certainly be in touch about any concerns you have.
Okay.
A lot of, so please feel free.
Um, Mike, it's your, item one dot five. Prove the calendar events and the budget calendar.
Yeah, so thanks to Mona, uh, because as you know, this is my first go-around in, in the budgeting cycle. Um, and I was unaware that the board approves the, the calendars that, uh, were included in an email earlier today. So one is a, a general calendar of events, uh, that covers everything from the start of the budget process all the way through town election. Um, and, you know, Mona worked on those dates, uh, you know, working with the appropriate parties, town clerk, et cetera. And then the other calendar is our, uh, kind of more short-term, uh, budget calendar, which again, starts, um, actually technically started back in September with the issuance of the capital budget guidance, but, uh, carries through, uh, February, uh, as the warrant committee, uh, concludes their operating budgets. Um, so if, if the board had no concerns, um, then I would ask for you to approve both of those uh, calendars. Again, these are standard. You do these each year. They've just been updated for, for this calendar or this fiscal year.
Thank you, Rob. Did we get replies from, on the capital budget side? I know this stuff went out. Anybody?
We've gotten, we've gotten some. You know, we don't, we don't have, have everything, but if we don't have everything, then the, then the boards have notified us. You know, they're wake, waiting for things.
Was the due date the end of month?
I beg your pardon?
When, when are they, when they do the end of October?
They would do October six.
When are the, when are the department submissions supposed to be in?
October the sixth.
October the sixth, okay. Okay.
And, you know, the schools have already told us that they won't have theirs.
Yeah, that's a, that's a whole different kettle of fish, right?
Right, but, you know, for the most part, the capital budget met already and you know, we're starting to go through the requests and begin to look at the information.
Sounds good. So this is the standard one, then we have the, uh, I saw the other one on my email. And essentially what it's telling me, the one that I focused on was the one that says the operating budget is gonna come, uh, before the Board of Selectmen to take a look at the end of November.
Correct.
Um, and then we'll turn it over to the Warren Committee presumably, uh, sometime in December.
Correct.
And that does sort of critical dates for us to hit, so they have time to, to, uh, to do their work, yeah?
That's right.
Okay. So what, what do we need to do on this?
Uh, just move to approve the, the calendar events in the FY twenty-five budget calendar.
Here we go. I move to approve the October twenty twenty-three, May twenty twenty-four calendar of events and the FY twenty-five budget calendar.
Second.
All in favor, I, Bob Springer?
Aye, John Jeffries.
Aye, Robin Hunter.
So, um, I am go, where are we at? We're at item one, six, Board Committee Commission Appointments. Okay. Okay, I move to a point, Zega. Alka Sniditz, I hope.
You, you, you haven't had one easy name to pronounce tonight.
Zyga? All right, give me a second, let's get on here.
It, yeah, it's phonetic, it says Zyga.
Zyga, yeah, but it's the?
Zyga, is correct.
Yeah, but it's the, uh, but it's the second name. Alks Sniditz, there was, there's no second name. Zyga to the Town Report Committee for a three-year term ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
Second.
All in favor, I Bob Springett.
I John Jeffries.
I Robin Hunter.
All right, one dot seven. Police Chief Search Update, John.
On, uh, on Friday of next week, we will have a consolidated one at one day. We will meet for nine hours on, on the twenty-eighth in the town hall with, with the four finalists, and the the structure of the meeting will be our, there will be in, involvement and observation by committee members throughout the day. Some members can't, literally can't be there for all nine hours, so we will take turns throughout the day. Uh, each of the four finalists will be in, they will be asked a series of questions by the panel of police chiefs, uh, will be able to observe those questions, and the committee members will not take part in the initial assessment of the technical answers as those technical answers are meant specifically for the chiefs. So, this has been, as I've reported, a, a really robust, very, um, impressive process. The candidates are really, really top-notch. They're, they've, they've impressed the police chiefs, they've impressed the committee. Um, this is, we're really getting down to this, the, the finalists and the, the, the amount of work that we've put in so far has been staggering. I, I've never been on a committee that's put in this much work in, in the search process.
It's an important job, John.
Yeah, it is a very, very important job, and Bob, Robin, the candidates are really, really well-qualified. So, that's, that's where we are.
Okay, Robin, your big intro.
Right, so. Right, so, so on Wednesday, um, afternoon, we had our initial meeting of the housing task force. Um, it was a really excellent meeting. Um, in attendance were representatives from the Planning Board, CONCOM, the ZBA, the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Health. For each of the, um, boards or committees, there was a board member as well as a staff member. We discussed the the mission of the task force, and we all agreed that the initial focus of the housing task force uh, will be to establish a formal process for the town to review multifamily development requests. Um, the deliverable from that process would be a comprehensive checklist and, um, calendar as to when each deliverable needed to be, um, completed, uh, and it would, it would be reviewed by all members of this committee. It was also recommended that the town perhaps reach out to Judy Barrett, who is a housing expert, um, and ask her to see if she can assist us in reviewing or pulling together this comprehensive checklist. Uh, the ZBA has worked with Judy Barrett on numerous occasions. She is supposed to be the state expert on multifamily housing. She responded back that she does have time, and she would be willing to work with the town to put this together, so that was excellent news.
That sounds, that sounds really good.
Right, so we all agreed that within the next two weeks, we would pull together sort of the first draft of what we believe the internal process is. We will then at that point have Judy on board, and she can look at what we think the right process is, and and work with the committee who has all the relevant parties to ensure that we've captured all items. Simultaneously to putting the process in place, uh, two members of the task force are going to be working on an education component to affordable housing for both, um, citizens and all of us in this, in this committee. And thirdly, we also discussed the need to have a webpage that's dedicated to housing and the various applications that are in process, and the rules and, and the steps and the checklist will be on there as well. And we volunteered our new assistant town administrator to work with the town to put, to put this, this up. And you know, our goal is by the end of November to have these things in place. We then agreed that the work of this committee would not be over when those three items were done, but rather the hard work will begin after that, whereby we need to think about what does development look like in Dover, what might be the types of development that work with the rural nature of the town, and at the same, what are the options that are out there? And then also look at our zoning, at our bylaws, and see are there changes we should be recommending to the town that would allow us to be proactive when it comes to multifamily. So, it was, it was, it was a great, it was a really great meeting. Everybody was engaged, involved, and is committed to, to making this work for the town.
It's always, it's always good to leave, to get the, go off the starting line, Robin.
Right.
Robin is, is Ju- town resident?
I don't, the name is really familiar, but I can't quite.
She is not a town resident, she is an external consultant. She actually wrote the handbook on how towns should approach forty Bs and the compliance around them. Uh, Alan Friar, who is the head of the ZBA, said that she has been extremely, she, she is the most knowledgeable individual, in his opinion, in the Commonwealth when it comes to these things.
I compliment. Okay. Thank you, Robin. So, BOS, Roles and Responsibilities Guidelines. Obviously, that went out. Obviously, we got some feedback. Obviously, we, maybe less obviously, we are in the process of redrafting, uh, making changes that were suggested, and rethinking in, in some, in some cases some of the issues that, that, um, sort of cropped up as we went through this. And sort of the big takeaway for me, um, quite frankly, is, um, when we talk about town roles and responsibilities, um, to me, they, they all of a sudden started to look like two different things. There are a lot of, there are a lot of, uh, uh, boards and commissions and committees who have pretty restrictive responsibilities, you know, and, and, but not broad roles in the town. The Board of Selectmen, on the other hand, has broad roles in the town, and we are the only, you know, with the elective body of the town, and so the executive authority and the roles we ask to play oftentimes move across what people would see as their areas of their prerogative. And we gotta make sure that as we go through this, that people understand our intent is where something is going to have a major impact on the town. I think we have critical obligation to step in and try to help pull the town together, to lead where we can, um, and to achieve the right objective for the town. So, when I, when I was working with Robin on draft two, I was trying to make sure that there was a distinction between the roles the Board of Selectmen play in town, because they're multiple, and they're really hard to define, be, because they're multiple, and that they were a much more, Planning Board has a specific set of responsibilities, limited role. Same with Warrant Committee, probably the same with COMCOM and Open Space. They, they are sort of siloed, looking at specific skill sets and specific areas, and that needs to be made clear, because I just don't think that people sort of understand how broad, um, the Board of Selectmen role is. So, we do intend to get that out shortly. I would hope we can get it out before the end of the month. Um, draft two, and then we can move on from there. Um, John, on the, the advisory working group?
Yeah, so Bob, in the investment working group, I, in, in the brief that we all wrote to Ruth for publication for the town, uh, for the, for the most recent town newsletter, um, we, we had a lot of conversation about the, the qualifications and what we're looking for in this in, investment analysis, investment, um.
Process, process, but we're not asking people to buy stock or bonds.
No, it's, it's the process, and it's the process, quite frankly, of transparency. Really, we, we're, we're trying to, to make it as simple to understand as possible, and we want to achieve transparency. We want to know, I, I just look at what we approved this evening for the catch basins and for road paintings and for signage, and we have done an exhaustive, uh, Kevin, and, and our employees in the town have done exhaustive research of these, these items, and we want to make sure that the exact same attention to detail is being made for these financial items. So, really, it's transparency. We want people who have a a background in this. Clearly, the, the licensing, as, as I noted in, in the, uh, brief, um, because it's something I take for granted, Bob, it's something you take for granted, Robin, in her role from a financial, uh, financial oversight that she has, we take these for granted every minute of every day, and yet, um, we want to be sure the vendors that are working for the town understand we want complete accuracy and complete transparency.
I agree, I think that's right. Now, John, do, are we gonna, when last we left, we were interviewing candidates?
Yes, so, we, we have people that, um, uh, Mike has received uh, interest from, from people. We're, we're, uh, having conversations with those people, and we've also are waiting to hear from other people who have to indicate interest as well.
Okay.
Mike, Mike, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
No, I, I, I think you covered it. Um, I think it's, I think the work's gonna be important, and, um, I thi- I think it's John, I think we've had three applicants, um, Mona can correct me, uh, to date, but I think we did expect a few more people to apply.
Yeah, we, we, well, there are a couple of people we spoke to two weeks ago who are away, and then there are, um, we, it's, I don't know, there's something about the town where it's sort of an echo effect. You say something, and then a week later, you know, you let it go out, and then a week later it comes back, and people say, or two weeks later, it comes back to you. And we say, we, we were asking for that two weeks ago, so.
That was, hey, that was October twenty-two, we asked for that information. The, um, we looking for three people, John?
We just need to make sure that we follow the process we put in place whereby anybody that volunteers is contacted and.
Sounds like we are, Robin. Sounds like we are. Are we looking for three or more?
Three.
Okay, so, um, and our next meeting is in November, right?
So, I, I, I actually would like to, um, I learned that I have to be in Europe the week of November thirty, and so now our meeting is on November.
October thirtieth, Robin, October thirtieth, because I think it's November fifth.
Right, and our meeting is on the second. I, I did look at the calendar, and it looks like we have three meetings in November, so I was wondering if we could perhaps move the meeting, um, for the second, if you still would like to have the meeting. Um, you know, it's, it's one AM for me in Europe, so if we could make it earlier, I would be happy to participate. Um, if, if not, I, I will just need to miss the meeting.
In, in the packet, we, we, based on the conversation Robin had, and, and I talked with Bob, we did propose, instead of the second uh, and the sixteenth, um, doing it the ninth, which would be the week in between, and then the thirtieth, so we, we'd have two meetings in November instead of three, if, if the board was agreeable.
John, you okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
Robin, you okay with that?
If, I, I very much appreciate it. It's, it's just something I couldn't change.
The bill is in the mail.
Okay.
Um, good, okay. Uh, anything on the upcoming agendas that caught your eye? Other than the date? Okay.
Mike, uh, well, we can cover this in your, in, in Michael's update with regards to the progress for Hail. I, I, I had, I had, uh, conversations. There was a, a very, very large event at Hail this weekend, this past weekend, and about four or five hundred participants in a, a huge day events, and had opportunity to speak with Eric Arnold, so I just will look forward to, uh, Mike's update or the updates that he might have from either, either conversations with Eric or conversations with Westwood.
Okay, so I'm gonna do, I have, I have, one of the things I do is have loose ends as a category on my list, so I'm gonna do a couple of loose ends. Um, so the three to five committee is going to get back into action uh, quite soon. I'm expecting to see something from Kate. They were on summer hiatus that lasted through fall. Um, she outlined, you'll see the update in the, in the, uh, in, in brief.
Me, in brief, right.
Yeah, you'll see that, and you might have already saw it when we set it around. Um, DCC is continuing. Um, obviously with the construction phase, um, there was some talk about how to, there was some talk about moving money around, uh, to cover the, in, in a different phase relative to the, to the two fifty and the, um, the, um, especially additional asbestos removal, that they're looking at a package a little bit differently, other than that, they're, they're, uh, the, the other, other issue that people are working on right now is the director's office, um, for the community center. The, um, the other thing that, that I have on my to-do is onboarding, and I'm working with Robin with an I and Mike, and Robin's gonna put together a little bit of a schematic plan that we're gonna review next week, so we're certainly looking at that. Um, we should become expert at that with four people getting on-boarded in, in relatively short period of time. So, more to come on that one, but that, that's sort of certainly in process. Um, there was one other thing that came up to me. Web redesign, we're gonna, gonna be arm wrestling with Robin for our new, uh, Communications Director, um, who starts on October thirtieth.
It's just one page we need.
Yeah, but you also gotta make sure you get the, um, I mean, if Facebook is how people, most, most people access information, you gotta make sure you're getting it out. Um, but yes, you need a page, and then you may, you may need a little, little policy. Web redesign, um, requires a staffing, as we talked about. One of the sort of the great clouds around web redesign is, but I mentioned this last time, that we had gotten some, let's say, not so great feedback um, uh, on our vendor, and so if we have to do a search for a new vendor, that's a whole different uh, set of subject matter. Mike and I have talked about if we had to do that, how, what could we bring out of the, out of Civic Plus to get us over the hump? So, there's, there's some planning and some thinking that has to go around, um, that web redesign effort. Once we get Chris, is it Chris?
Yes, Chris.
Chris on board, and then we talk with, uh, with Civic Plus. Um, lastly.
Bob, who's Chris?
He's a new guy.
The new assistant.
The new ATA.
Yeah, so I call him the Communications Director because I think.
Said Communications Director and and we. How did this get by me?
Well, it's the same guy. We just hit, just give two hats. Well, it's a debate because depends on how much work comes out of which particular area. Um. So I was looking at, one of the things that has bothered me for a long time is. Um, how we do planning. So in, we sit down in July and do planning theoretically for FY twenty five, but the budget for FY twenty five is already set. So I was thinking that when we took a look at when we, meaning the warrant working group, took a look at the calendar. Um, there is an opportunity around now. To take a, to start to think more carefully or strategically about FY twenty five. And if we see the need to. Help the our department heads uh, plan for that, we should, we should bring it up now. So we should plan FY twenty five, the first six months, which is July to December now. And then in July, we should plan the second half of FY twenty five, because that's when that'll happen. From my spreadsheet, it looks like FY twenty five, it's gonna be two, if if things go according to plan, there are. A couple of things that will happen. When we swing into FY twenty five, chances are we'll. We'll we'll have an opportunity to reengage on the technology side and there are a number of. Um, projects that are queued up um, for. That need to be addressed. That means we need to solve the riddle of the missing municipal project manager and the funding. For a municipal project manager. Um, so that's one thing. The other thing that's likely to happen in first. Half of FY twenty five is the community center is gonna come online and we need to make sure that. Um, between. Let's say March or April and the fall, all of the issues that need to be addressed and solved and resolved. Relative to the opening of the commu- of that particular facility are addressed, including money we may need for custodians. Uh, or other people. Uh, a director, um, and that policies are set. So that's gonna be a big lift. Um, for for a number of people. There was a lot of work done. People, people know there's a lot of work done by C Mac, looking at like communities. So a lot of the groundwork. Um, has been, I think, done. But nevertheless, there's there's gonna have to be a group that gets together with the community's best interests at heart. To make sure that we um, nail opening day. I can't think of other big issues. That um, in in the, as we turn from in July to uh. To the second, to the first part of that, last part of that year, that may come up, but I ask you to relook. The goals and objectives and rethink what you guys think are gonna happen. Um, in that period of time, so that we are, our budget reflects those goals and priorities. Okay? Okay.
Yeah.
And um. The last thing I have is I sent out a. Note. To the warrant committee. I did that with my. Working group, warrant committee, working group. Uh, assignment. Um, and it talked about level service. Um, and I suggested that it may be time that we take a look at. What the impact of level service guideline has been to Dover. Over the past twenty years, because I am critically concerned that we are, we are growing at double the inflation rate. And we are handing out. Compounding eight percent increases, well, six to eight percent increases to staff. And I really don't know what that says about controlling costs. Or or making investments. And so there, I I got a note from Jim saying. Something about warrant committees jobs to do X, Y, and Z. Um, I didn't go back and say, well, I'm not asking them to do X, Y, and Z, which we're not presenting them with a budget. We're asking them, do they wanna participate with us looking at budget guidelines and their impact over time? And I don't, and I think, you know, that's not a collusion between in two boards. It should be something that we. Um, one town, uh, shared values, we should be sure we're not heading into the financial iceberg that we're not aware of. So um. Uh, I don't, I I'd like to go with, go forward that if we cannot. Do it internally, then I'd like to hire a consultant to take a look at what we do. And what its impact may or may not be or what it has been, so that um, we have a level of comfort that. Relative to our financial responsibilities, uh, we're clean. And again, I will point out, most of the time we've looked at financial information, we have not been clean. So I ask you to think about that and.
Well, I looked at the correspondence that Mike sent out and. What you're saying is not what I read, the correspondence. And I actually did. You know, the warrant committee has a very prescribed rule from a. They have a very prescribed rule. I think. If this is a task force or a working group. Just like the working group that we had for free cash and we all worked together. That that nobody would object to, but that's not how I read the document. So if we want to put together another working group to look at strategy. You know, I thought the way we approached um, the free cash was excellent because you. Members from, you know, they were designated members from Warren. Designated members from the board, um, the three of us even split up.
Yep, yep.
Depending on the the focus. And then we also had. The um, the outside consultant that we all worked with. But that's.
The assessors.
Right, right. So we had everybody. So I think that. Would be, and I I I don't think anybody would have an objection with that. I think maybe this is. A time where the written word. Just, just, just like the roles and responsibilities of the Board of Selectmen, the written word sometimes. Is misinterpreted or or is too precise. So I think.
Yeah, I wanted to float the idea. Because the, how we solve the problem requires that we, it's an idea worth investigating. And and you're right, I think the uh, the free cash and the cap save and that stuff went really well.
So I would, I would, I would duplicate that. Because I thought it was excellent.
I'm gonna call more, I'm gonna have to take, I'm gonna have to talk, tell Mike he has to change his name to Chris.
So.
And commute from the Cape.
Similarly, I I went back to two thousand sixteen and saw how we. Began the process of a free cash. Analysis and the free cash analysis became a a basically a task force, just as you described, and we did. Two thousand sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and then what happened was. It morphed into, okay, these are the things that this are, what we started with were. A conflict, and that's maybe not the right word, but.
Oh, there was definitely conflict, John.
Yeah, okay, that right word, conflict at town meetings where people would say, we want you to give us back. That free cash, your, you've got too much free cash. And we would respond by saying, no, 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 we really don't. That a large amount of this cash is already allocated for things that. You just don't see and we have, it's not present. It's a, it's future. Money that we owe. Anyways, well. As four, two years later and three years later. After tho- those initial um, those initial conflicts, there were no conflicts. It. It was a matter of of really getting everyone on the same page. Like we won together, understanding what exactly is we were doing.
Transparency and engagement, John.
Exactly. It it's exactly what I would, what what I'm uh, what I said earlier.
Yes, it is.
The the finance, the finance, uh, the people who are handling our finances that we. Really have to get under control. But Robin, I I completely agree that. The word that came back to us from Jim Repetti twice was analyze. Warrant analyzes. My response was, this is exactly what we want them to do. Help us analyze.
Right, but there, but if you read the bylaws, they are, they are the watchdog. They are supposed to be the ones making sure they're, they're watching us. There has to be a group in town that says. Are this Board of Selectmen being fiduciary responsible? That is the law. But then there's this whole financial strategy component to it. And you know, I think way back when that was supposed to be the long range planning committee. But you can't rely on volunteers. To do that, you really need engagement of the town. And that's why I think the way we went about. Or approached. Free cash is really the way to approach this as well. You know, you you put together, and 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 again, it can't be. The middies in silos, it needs to be. Um, it needs to be somebody from Warren. It's not gonna compromise that position as watchdogs because it's creating policy. Somebody from the town, you know, town. A town representative, you know, because Carl was instrumental in that as the Director of Finance. You know, he was the one helping run, run, run the models. He came, I believe Carl came to all of our meetings in the three. Sections. He was kind of.
Yeah, he was, he was, he was this glue who went between.
Right.
But you, you, so I I saw Jim's note. He talks about, you know, the bylaws. They specifically talk about reviewing the budget. Not necessarily the impact of their budget. And I, my, my point is, what we're trying to look at is understand what the policy implications are of this guideline. We're not asking them to look at the budget, and I think it's an overreaction on Jim's part.
Well, I, you know, Jim is a lawyer and this is how lawyers interpret things and.
They do. That's what lawyers do.
Right, and he has, and he's, you know, when you look at the bylaws, I would say he's spot, he's spot on, but then there's.
I would say he's too narrow.
You know, it, I I don't, I don't think so, because I think that's what the intent was, but. But that's, you know, it doesn't mean, I still, I still think. It's it's not worth, it's not worth wasting our breath on this. I, because I think there is a path. Forward to give us what we all need, right? And I think it's creating this, this, this task force that that then reports back to the committees about what they're doing.
So my question then, my second question is, do we need help? Do we need somebody who actually has professional skills doing this? Or do we go back to the volunteer model?
You know, as I said again, the hybrid approach worked well. So let the group get together and define what the scope of this work is. And then interview, see, see if there are firms that can help us.
Okay.
Go talk to other towns as well, see what they're doing.
Yep, okay, sounds like a good start. Thank you. You guys have anything else or or you want me to move on? Town administrator updates?
I'm good.
Okay, Mike, you get your show.
Yep, I'll I'll jump in. I I know we're running a little behind schedule. Um, so a lot of my thunder was stolen. Uh, you know, I've been working a lot on the forty billion housing issues. Uh, Bob mentioned the community center, uh, both in terms of the the demolition is is almost done. Uh, which is, it was just pretty exciting and also working um, on the director's office uh, in in talking to Bob. Bob's been really helpful in terms of the history of that discussion. Obviously, I wasn't here for that, so. Uh, it's been helpful for you to understand the the importance of that. Um, as John referenced, uh, before, I think, before the meeting started. Um, for the benefit of the public, you may see a couple hydrants around the town common that have been covered in a black plastic bag. Um, again, as John mentioned, it is not used for fire prevention, those hydrants, it's simply for the water system. Um, we're doing a water study uh, that we received a grant for. Um, as you know, in the community may. The town uh, only water infrastructure is a very small area around the town common, so we're evaluating uh, the health of that system. So uh, those will be there for a couple of weeks, uh, and then they'll be gone. So just for the public's benefit and in case you get additional questions. Um, also was referenced, uh, I think we talked about last meeting, but didn't reference the name. So we have a new assistant town administrator. Starting on the thirtieth, Chris Costello, uh, who's a management analyst in Wayland. Um, the piles on my desk alone speak to how excited I am to have him getting started. So I'm I'm really looking forward to that. Um, as John mentioned, Hale, um, so I. I want to be a little careful because I know a lot of Hale has been an executive session. Uh, but I think I'm comfortable saying that we continue to meet with Westwood. Uh, with Hale, with the trustees to work through the CR document. And then, um, you know, I I think it's probably obvious to the public, the intent was to have a fall special town meeting. Um, we are well into fall, so um, we are, have a meeting uh, with Hale next week in person in Westwood. Uh, to discuss that timeline and potential revisions to that. So um, we will keep the public updated. Um, in in whether or not we come back to the board in executive session, it could be done in public session, I'll I'll let you know, but um, I would stay tuned for that. Um, because I I do think there'll be some revision there.
I know, is there any way we could have, we can't have a full time meeting?
That, that's what I'm saying. Uh, I think, I I think it's fair to say that we've, we've missed the boat.
Yeah, if it's gonna be anything, it'd be early twenty next year.
So so that's the discussion with Westwood in Hale is is, i- assuming that the fall is gone. Um, when, when, what would that look like in in twenty twenty four? Could that be something early in the year? Could it be tied more closely to our annual process? That's, that's the ongoing discussion now.
Okay, thank you. John, I'm sorry for cutting you off.
I I just, uh, Mike, when you finalize the 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 day and the hour with Eric, can you just loop me in?
Oh, ab- absolutely. Yep, of course, of course. Um, and then, uh. You know, it's it's also Bob mentioned, working on the onboarding. Robin and I met today and and Bob, she'll have a draft to, I think, tomorrow of a document that we can meet next week on, which will be great. And then lastly, uh, for the board's benefit and the public, because they may see some work. Um, as the board may recall, uh, in earlier this year, before my arrival, uh, you received a municipal fiber grant. Um, this is a a grant that uh, they'll install um, network cables to um. Townhouse, police and fire. Uh, the community center, library and highway. Um, and this is a benefit for the reliability of our our town uh, infrastructure network and also cybersecurity as well, because it's a closed. Loop system. Um, and we also have a state earmark that would help up. Uh, upgrade some internal components like firewalls and switches that would also improve our cybersecurity resilience. So that project was originally supposed to be completed by June thirtieth. Um, we, there were some very significant delays in material, as is in all things. So the grant, uh, we actually reached out to Saint Gennett Extension through the end of this calendar year. Uh, and our contractor was here yesterday or today, and they will be getting work next week. Um, so you will see trucks uh, and both on property and in the area uh, installing this fiber. So it's, it's not really a um. Uh, for lack of a better word, a sexy project, but it's, it's really exciting and important.
It's an important project. You get a stable environment.
Correct, correct. Um, so we are very excited um, for that. Um, and then in terms of loose ends, I I know I emailed the board, but um, just to follow up as the public was on the, on the meeting. The Dover Wine Company, we have a a draft agreement I'll send to you. Um, the the owners there were very appreciative of your vote and they, they're looking to only stay open late three days. Uh, New Year's Eve, Thanksgiving Eve and Christmas Eve. Um, so I'll send you the copy of that agreement, but they were very appreciative. And um, actually was able to go over with the first time today, uh, and and um. See the store and it just was really, really exciting. They seemed really happy and.
Get a glass of wine?
And not, not today, not today. I got some, some peanuts and a Diet Coke before the meeting. So.
Okay.
And caffeine.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, so um, item C one consent agenda, I'm assuming you're done, Mike?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, all set, yes.
Okay, so, so I just, can I just say something? I I just wanna say that, Mike. It. We don't mean to steal your thunder, but I think everybody should know that you. Are a very active participant in everything that we reported. So I, you know, I certainly really appreciate your input. So I, you know, I certainly really appreciate your input to the housing task force and you were present and engaged in the meeting, so.
You know, we may.
Maybe, maybe we need to alternate the town administrator update with the Board of Selectmen update, so once in a while, it could go ahead of us.
Yeah, we have too much to do. We need another guy or another night, woman to come in here and help us out. It's our big job now. And and being a team does lo- lower the threshold a wee bit.
So thank you, thank you, Mike. I don't want the town to think that you are not actively engaged. You're, you're the one leading most of these.
You got me running late here, guys. Consent agenda. Approved GIS service agreement between Dover and cartographic associates, approved special one-day liquor license for December seventh, twenty twenty-three, approved POS open session meeting minutes for January fifth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, I, Bob Springett?
I, John Jeffries.
I, Robin Hunter.
Now, for the pleasure of the evening, do I ha- make a motion to adjourn our meeting?
Seconded.
All in favor, I, Bob Springett?
I, John Jeffries.
I, Robin Hunter.
Thank you all for your participation. Thank you all for all your thoughts and insights and I, and um this actually felt like a nice meeting. We're, we're working on issues and getting stuff done. Appreciate very, very much. Thank you.
There's a lot, lot of moving parts.
Yeah, there you go. Have a great weekend. Be good.
Thank you. Hi, good night.